Want to tend to lean positive. I think it's a positive that it came out of nowhere. But in this, in this scenario, in this saga, I don't think we can, nobody should feel comfortable with guessing if it's a good thing or a bad thing.
To me, it means the mayor wants to get this thing through before additional no votes could come on the city council. And also let the city steer the ship for once.
You are locked on Rays, your daily Tampa Bay Rays podcast, part of the Locked On Podcast Network, your team every day.
Welcome to Locked On Rays, your daily podcast covering everything Tampa Bay Rays from game analysis to player interviews. We have got you covered with all the latest news and insights. My name is Kevin Weiss.
I'm Ulysses Sembreno.
Bringing you expert analysis and passionate discussions about our beloved Rays.
Whether you're a diehard fan who vividly remembers long goes game one, six to two, just like us.
Or you remember the early Devil Ray days of Wade Boggs and Carl Crawford.
We're here to break down every trade, every play and every milestone. In fact, this is our sixth season covering the Rays daily.
And every season up till 2024, the Rays have gone to the playoffs, but you can still grab your favorite Rays gear, settle in and subscribe to our Locked On Rays YouTube channel and other podcast platforms. You can also find us on X and Instagram at Locked On Rays.
Today's episode is brought to you by FanDuel. You can start the season with a big return on FanDuel. New customers can place a $5 bet and you'll get started with $150 in bonus bets if you win your first $5 bet. Visit FanDuel.com to get started.
All right, Ulysses, we do have some stadium news. Surprisingly, the city of St. Petersburg has added an agenda item to their meeting this afternoon, which is Thursday, December 5th, and it involves levying the bonds for a new stadium for the Rays and the historic gas plant district. I thought it would be a little bit longer before this item would come to play, i.e. later on this month, but they've moved it up interestingly.
It's the reality show that we didn't ask for. And yet it continues to be just breaking news and plot twists here and there. Yeah, we, we literally talked about this a couple of days ago saying, okay, well, we just have to wait until December 17th. And nope, two days later, we're talking about this. I, look, if this was, let's get right into it. If this was a sudden, let's put it into the agenda. It, something happened. Something happened. Either votes were turned from no's to yeses. And now you can go ahead and, and activate that twist. Or there was something that was said that did not fall kindly to somebody's ears and they're sick of it. And they said, you know what? Let's just, let's just end the charade once and for all. So I, I don't know really how to feel if it's a positive or negative. I want to tend to lean positive. I think it's a positive that it came out of nowhere. But in this, in this scenario, in this saga, I don't think we can, nobody should feel comfortable with guessing if it's a good thing or a bad thing. I don't, nobody should be putting their hand on the fire for this thing.
No, uh, but I will say, I think it's a good thing ultimately. To me, it means a couple of things as other people have reported that Mayor Ken Welch has had conversations with the council members and elected officials and believes that he has the votes to push this through. So let's go ahead and stick it early on, on the December 5th agenda. Also preventing an issue that you had with the county because the city has new, uh, two new council members that are going to get sworn in on January 2nd. They are Corey Givens and Mike Harding. And my understanding is both those individuals are less than enthusiastic about this stadium plan. Based on an article by Colleen Wright, which was published yesterday afternoon. Givens declared, quote, "people over baseball" right after he was elected and Harding was backed by stadium opposition group. No home run because he's been less enthusiastic than his opponent, Pete Boland toward the proposal. So to me, it means the mayor wants to get this thing through before additional no votes could come on the city council. And also let the city steer the ship for once. Put the Rays on notice and put the county on notice. Because it seems like it's been the county that's been, as of late, deciding, voting, delaying, all that. Where now it's, at the end of the day, it's, it's more of a city ideation project. So let the city approve the bonds, make the county, that might lead the county to approving the bonds. And now it's up to the Rays to fulfill their obligations or default. And if they default, then hey, the, uh, the city and county, or the city, I should say, would, um, still retain the redevelopment area. That's my understanding of how it is currently going to play out.
And no one wants to be the one holding the blame, right? So I think if, if we think about it positively in this, um, it, it means that it's a yes. Well, then the city has now chosen their side and said, we're not holding the blame on this. It's not up to us. If this falls through, it ain't us. So now it's up to the county and then, and then the Rays ultimately. But I, again, I want to, I want to think positively. I want to think that it's, it's, it's a good thing that it was added, uh, late, um, yesterday. It was like around what? 3:00 PM, something like that, that it came out like.
Late afternoon.
Late, I mean, that's what, less than 24 hours? I mean, that's, that's pretty sudden. So we'll see, man. I mean, um, this is going to be a Parks and Rec type episode that we're going to be living through the next 24 hours. But hopefully, um, with more laughs than we've had in the, in the past two months.
Yeah. And, uh, be forewarned, we are not spending the whole episode talking about stadium stuff. We want to get into some trade rumors, hot stove action that pertains to the Rays and more. But we just figured it was opportune to mention this at the top of the show. We do have some comments from listeners out there on this updated timeline. Justin Peg says, I think the updated timeline means it's a go. Ryan Hill says, maybe the city and county will for, force the Rays' hand now. This is probably the best case scenario because I doubt the Rays will terminate the deal. Ben says, not sure how to feel exactly. Uh, Dan Nedvedek says, I don't understand how the agenda item was added at the last minute and the council had to be informed. I don't know the answer to that. You'd have to ask the mayor and/or city administrator, Rob Gertis, as to how that took place. It does seem pretty late in the ballgame to, uh, add an item like that. I guess you can make it an emergency item. But again, going back to it, something tells me that the mayor, city administrator, multiple people have had conversations with the elected officials and they believe they have enough votes to get it through here. Tummy Sticks, uh, says, uh, blank, the St. Pete Council. Tampa Bay sports fan says recycle old news into new news. Colin says, just shoot me already. I just want it to be over. We feel the same way to some extent. Uh, Down By The River says, voting to approve the bonds will make the Rays officially back out of the deal. I'm for it. Thomas says, I don't give an F until anything is official. Done with these dumb quote, St. Pete officials and this dumb owner who should sell the team. So there we have it. Some mixed reaction from the.
Who, uh, who said that last thing?
Thomas.
Thomas, Thomas.
I just have his at, which is a bunch of numbers after his first name. So it could be a bot, could be a Russian bot.
That's, that's what I, that's what I was.
It's Matt Silverman's burner account.
Yeah. Look, hey, Thomas, hope you're having a great Thursday, man. Um, let's, let's, uh, chill in the rhetoric a little bit and, uh, just have a peaceful day today. Uh, have a good day, you know, let's, let's calm down. Ultimately, guys, we get really heated about this stuff, but as a sports team, it's, it's, there are worse things out there. But yeah, we, we get heated about this, but those, those bots type of responses, let's, let's chill a little bit.
Yes. And I believe the, uh, let me just pull up what Colleen wrote because she has been in on the issue as well as anybody. So the bonds, the city, if approved, the city would issue bonds to contribute $287.5 million towards the stadium. And another 142 million for roads and sewers in the gas plant district. So that's, what does that play here?
So over $400 million then?
Correct. Yeah. And that is not tourist tax dollars. That is county. So I believe this is from property taxes, ad lorm, all that. So, um, I think if, let's hope they approve it and then go from there.
Exactly. Let's hope they approve it. And on Friday, which means Tamara, um, we'll, we'll talk it over with, uh, Mr. Evan Kloski. We'll have him on the show. So.
Scale of one to 10, or where are you leaning here on this vote that should occur sometime during the meeting? Which I think starts at 1:30, something thereabouts. If you were to put green Skittles on, they're going to approve it. They're going to kill it or they're going to delay it. What would you say as of this moment?
As of this moment, while drinking my coffee, I think I would say 65 yes, 35 no.
Okay. I like it. Let's go with that.
But I just, Kevin, you need to tell me where I would need to put those green Skittles where?
Uh, there's only one place to go to put those green Skittles and that is FanDuel. And that is where you can also tackle the NFL action because FanDuel is America's number one sportsbook. Right now, new customers can bet $5 and get 150 in bonus bets if you win. The FanDuel Sportsbook app gives you everything you need to place live bets on the NFL all in one place. So when you get a hunch in the middle of the game, you can check out the latest stats, view live play-by-play and so much more on the same page where you place your bets. Just visit FanDuel.com to join today. You will get started with $150 in bonus bets if you win your first $5 bet. That is at FanDuel.com. Never waste a hunch and make every moment more with FanDuel. They are an official sportsbook partner of the National Football League. All right, Ulysses, that's enough for our stadium talk. Uh, let's get into some hot stove news that we haven't really had a chance with the holidays and so forth to dive deep on. Couple of interesting items. One, John Paul Marosa, Marosi, uh, John Paul Marosi, who is a well-established reporter and news breaker for Major League Baseball, has put out rumors or reports that the Rays are shopping or getting interest on a pair of pitchers, namely Jeffrey Springs and Pete Fairbanks. So if you want to look at this in a negative lens, it is, hey, the Rays are doing what they've done forever seemingly. And that is trying to save on payroll, dump payroll and get what they can in return. Because Springs is making a whole lot of money and then Fairbanks, still affordable, is making a chunk of change, but everything adds up. If you trade both of these players simultaneously, the Rays would in essence be saving $14 million this year plus money next year as well to open up the purse strings for whatever reason. Maybe that's getting a middle of the order bat. Maybe that is saving for some of those cost over runs with a hopefully newly approved stadium.
I mean, yeah, that, that, that last one, that's, that's cheeky. Uh, yeah. Three years ago, if you would have said Jeffrey Springs will one, one day be the highest paid Rays player in, in, on this team. You'd been like, all right, I'd really like to know what you're having because it's making you have greater hallucinations in a safe way. So hit me up. But it is, he is tied for first, um, for highest salary in 2025 at 10.5 mil. You said Fairbanks also making a chunk of change at 3.67 for him in 2025. Look, I understand the, the, the first reaction for most fans, even though we know how this is how they operate. All right. Even, even fans, even the, the Topkin reply guys, they go, what? They're shopping around Fairbanks and Springs? They know how this team operates. They hate it, but they know how they operate. Honestly, bro, I'm fine with it. Shop Springs, shop Fairbanks, but only and only if you're using Springs and Fairbanks to get offensive help today.
Not a bunch of low A prospects.
Not low A, no lottery ticket, no, let's see if this guy pans out. No, let's see, ho, this is an Xavier Isaac at 19 years old. Let's put him in low A. No, 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 no.
Right.
I need a type of the Ryan Pepio with a bat type of guy. He can help us now. And know how I said Ryan Pepio, not Johnny DeLuca. All right. So you guys, you know, you, you, you take what, what I mean by that. I'm fine with that. Go, uh, go trade Springs, go trade Fairbanks. I don't know if maybe diff, at a package, maybe. You would be making a, one particular team very, 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 very much more difficult to, to play against. But if they're also, you know, depleting their, their offensive contributions by you getting one of their guys, fine. We understand the bullpen. We understand the starting rotation for 2025. It's pretty loaded. If you go ahead and do this, you know, Hunter Biggie, front of the pod, he can be a, 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 an arm for, for, for late innings. Uzeta was phenomenal last year. You hope that Muna Rodriguez can, can take a step forward. You know, there, there are options there. I mean, Drew Rasmussen, if he doesn't make it into the rotation, you got yourself a, a pretty good arm there for the eighth and ninth inning as well. So I am fine with the bullpen. I am fine with the rotation. It's the offense that needs some help. And if you're willing to trade these two guys, you better get something for in the middle of the order bat. That can really help the Josh Lowes, the Brendan Laues, the Yandy Diaz and, and Junior Caminero.
Trading from a position of strength for a position of need. I totally get it. I understand it. And I think some of it, as cheeky as we are about, hey, the Rays trying to pay for cost overruns and they'll be playing in Stockburner next year or this coming season, who knows where they'll be playing in future years and how that could impact revenues. Plus, I hate to bring it up, but you still have the uncertainty of the wander outcome. I think, you know, based on the rumblings that, you know, the Rays should be able to get out of that deal. But that's still something that you have to weigh and consider and do an analysis of. But you know, Pete Fairbanks, if we start with him, when healthy, I know we've had some issues here and there, but he's been great, awesome, deliverable when healthy. But the issue is, he hasn't been available like the Rays would need him to be available. He has never reached 50 appearances or topped 45 in a third innings in any big league season. Plus you have the consideration of how does he handle the cold weather environment? When he's playing road games in Chicago in April or playing in New York in September? And then you hopefully get to the playoffs in October. Can he handle that? Can he weather that? And if you look at some of the under the hood stuff, from 2020 to 2023, he struck out nearly 35% of his opponents. But that number slipped this past season to 23.7. So you struck out about 11, 12% fewer batters this year, which should be concerning if that's your de facto closer or that's your closer that you're paying multiple millions of dollars to. And then you have the added issue of, hey, the Rays are going to be playing so many road games this year, second half of the season. How does that impact the wear and tear of the body? And same thing for Jeffrey Springs too, because I mean, we can get to his issues with being available. I think the Rays are just saying, hey, we, if we're going to pay guys this amount of money. Look, other teams can handle it, but us, we're not in a position or we don't want to be in a position to pay millions of millions of millions of dollars to guys who are going to be on the shelf for a portion or majority of the season. They're great when they, when they're on the mound, but we need them on the mound.
Yeah. And I think they've made their calculations with Brendan Lau and said, hey, okay, we can do this. Even though it's, it's a lot of money, but he, if he gives us 100 games, that's worth the money. Maybe 3.67 million is not worth the money for 35 appearances. And maybe 80 or so innings from Jeffrey Springs is not worth being the highest salary for 2025. So, um, those are the calculations that, that they of course have to make. I, the cold weather thing.
Yeah.
I understand that he said that it wasn't an issue, but his, one of his first blowups of 2024, you guessed it, cold weather. It was in Colorado. And later he said it, it, it wasn't an issue. Look, where can you send him? This is a, this is a known issue, like other teams know this. So, but who's going to call for a guy who can't throw well effectively in April and then September, October? It's, it's, it ain't the Cubs. And you know, like they're not going to call and say, yeah, we want a guy that can't throw in the cold. But you know, it ain't going to be the Mariners either. Like who, like what? The Miami Marlins? You're gonna call.
You know, hey, I mean, Peter Bendix loves acquiring former Rays players. So maybe that's the move right there.
He does. I, I don't know. I, I feel like the trading of Fairbanks is going to be a little bit difficult because of that. Everybody knows this and they don't want that, you know? If you want a high leverage guy, you want him in the high lever, in the most high leverage times. And that'll be September, October, if you're chasing for a playoff spot or in the playoffs. So I think trading Fairbanks makes sense, um, especially with, like you said, the dipping of the fanning percentage, you know, going 11% striking out guys less. Like that's, that's a chunk, man. Um, that, that gives you the chance to be making a decision such as he's no longer a closer. He can be our setup guy.
Right.
And maybe that's a better suited role for him in another team. But, um, no, again, I, I 100%, I, I understand where France fans are coming from. We're saying like this again. But I am completely fine with it if it addresses our current issues, which is the lack of offense. And if you're playing at Steinbrenner Field, Kevin, and you got Yandy Diaz first bat, Brendan Lau second. Let's say Junior Caminero third, Josh Low fourth. So you got righty, lefty, righty, lefty. I know that the obvious thing would here to be, to be bringing a, a righty bat. But if you're playing in Steinbrenner Field, you gotta take advantage of that right, short, right porch. So maybe getting another lefty bat in there would be the optimal decision here.
No, I'm with you. And then if we talk about Springs a little bit, again, you need a guy that can give you an amount of innings that makes the 10, 11 million dollars worthwhile. And for what it's worth, I know small sample size in 2024, but his velocity on his four seamer, his slider, it is change up or down about a mile and a half respectively. His swinging strike rate also decreased by similar percentage points. And you just look at it, we've talked about it. Hey, six man rotation, what do you do? We got a lot of guys that could, uh, help out. And these are cheaper options, mind you, between Rasmussen, Pepio, Littell, Taj, Baz, McClanahan. And who knows, maybe the Rays like what they see from 40 man ads, Joe Rock and Ian Seymour. So it seems like they got a lot of options at play and you want to be able to trade from that as well. So that's kind of where we're at. We'll see if, uh, those moves are made. But again, if you trade those guys, maybe package them up, try to get that middle of the order bat and see what you can do. I would find it unfortunate again, if they go and say, hey, we're, we're trading them for, you know, minor leaguers that you've never heard of. A, a guy that is percolating and ready to pop at the big league level. That, that is what we need right now. So.
Also, can I just say, I know that some people were very, probably very fuming at the lineup construction. It was an example. And I know they're also fuming because they're saying, what about Christopher Morrell? He's our fifth bat. We're expecting almost 30 home runs for him. Well, you might be expecting that from him.
Yeah.
But some of us are not expecting that from him.
I, yeah. Um, I, I'm hoping that the Rays have something up their sleeve or, or know something that we don't know that he can get back on track and, and produce, um, something similar to what he did with Chicago, but that remains to be seen. In his defense, I mean, even, you know, Esack Paredes struggled when he went to the Chicago Cubs. So some guys, pitchers, offensive players, whatever it may be, it is a challenging transition sometimes, uh, to go from a team you've been with for several years to a new team, new league, getting, getting familiar with all that on and off the field. You're willing to give a guy a little bit of a reprieve, but how much more of a reprieve can you give him when, uh, he put up a 547 OPS? When you were expecting a 740 OPS? I, I don't know. So.
I guess we have one more year. We'll give him a year, but I'm not like, if I'm making my calculations, I'm certainly not going to be putting 30 home runs next to Christopher Morrells. Uh, I hope so. Heck, I, I hope he hits 50. But you know what? I'm not going to put either of those numbers next to his name.
That's fair. Uh, in other news, um, hot stove rumblings, uh, I know, Ulysses, we've talked many times on the show. The Rays need a catcher or at least a backup catcher, well, probably a primary catcher to tag team with Ben Rortved and/or Logan Driscoll. Well, the options just got slimmer as Kyle Higashioka has signed a two-year deal with the Texas Rangers. The deal is worth 12 and a half million dollars over two years, 5.75 in 2025, 6.75 in 2026. There's also a $7 million mutual option for 2027 with a $1 million buyout. So he is off the table. Travis Darno signed weeks ago by the Los Angeles Angels. He is off the table. So the free agent catching lineup is scarce if you're the Rays. I mean, probably the best remaining options that I can think of are Carson Kelly and Danny Jansen. I don't know about how people feel about that, but that's kind of where you're at, at this juncture. I mean, it tells you, Fangraphs actually wrote a really interesting article about the catching position being so scarce in free agency. So much so that Cleveland, who are similarly financially conscious as the Rays, resigned Austin Hedges to a one-year, $4 million deal. He was, I don't, maybe you want to go so far as say to a, as bad offensively as Alex Jackson, but it's pretty darn close. He had a 21 OPS plus this past season. Now, mind you, he is one of the best defensive guys and one of the best clubhouse guys. So I guess if you can play defensive catcher and you get along with everybody at catcher, you can get yourself three, $4 million. Similar to, you know, what Mike Zanino got a couple of years ago as well with the Rays and other teams. But, um, that's where we're at right now.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a desert right there for catching, uh, options. And you're right, Austin Hedges, you know, he, he makes up for it by being a great defensive catcher, great game caller. Pitchers love pitching to him. So you understand that part of it. Alex Jackson, I mean, the only thing was like, oh, Taj, but then.
Yeah. You have one guy that, that is out there banging the drum for him and that's about.
And we've covered how Taj, you know, also didn't do that great with Alex Jackson either. So if you don't know those numbers, go ahead and look at the player review for Taj Bradley that we did earlier in the off season. Dominic Keegan is hopefully the savior behind the dish, but he played 105 games in double A, okay? In 2024, he ain't coming up in 2025. So everybody forget about Dominic Keegan. Please forget about him. Do not even mention him until 2026. At the earliest, do not mention him. It's not, he's a non-factor here. So what are you going to do for 2025? It has to be a trade, has to be a trade because the options out there are not pretty. And I, I, I get Carson Kelly could be a something, Danny Jansen could be something. But for the money that they might be asking for, maybe it's just, you know, either led Logan Driscoll and, and I know you can't, you, you can't, you have to do something with the catching position. You have to address it, even if it's a, if, even if it's a swing and a miss, you have to address it. So we'll see, we'll see what happens. It's not great.
Now, I mean, uh, on a silver lining point of view, if I reference that Fangraphs article, it does mention that many of the contenders or teams expected to contend in 2025. They seem pretty set at catcher. So you may not have a lot of suitors going after Carson Kelly, Danny Jansen and others. So that's what it's worth. I think going down the line though, um, in order for the Rays to be successful behind the backstop, getting what they want behind the backstop, not just defensively, clubhouse wise and offensively. You got to find a way to develop your homegrown talent. And it starts with Dominic Keegan and other guys. Get them into your system early, show them the way, show them how you want things to be done at that position. Good familiarity with the pitchers that you'll be working with at a big league level. Because, uh, I just feel like in a, a trade might have to be it, but I think a lot of these guys, you, you need to, um, you need to foster them in the minors and, and make sure they're ready. And oftentimes it's not going to work, but hopefully you can hit on one or two of them within the next handful of years.
And I get your point, but to be devil's advocate here, when have the Rays ever developed a catcher? A good catcher.
De'Onor Navarro, I don't know.
Exactly. It's been a minute. They didn't even like, uh, Rene Pinto, you know, so like, um, I don't know if maybe getting them in and showing them the quote unquote Rays way of catching is a good thing. Honestly, if, if other. Getting them in and showing them the quote unquote Rays way of catching is a good thing. I, honestly, if, if other franchises look for the Rays for pitching. Maybe we should look at other organizations that know how to do a little bit catching better than us to, to pick their brain. Um. We can go over this, but I do want to mention the Snell signing. Um, goes to LA, uh, gets his bag. I mean, five-year, 182 million dollars. Uh, good for Blake. He gets that Andrew Friedman reunion because he drafted him in 2011. He gets reunited with his World Series bud Tyler Glass now from 2020. Um, just overall, what a great, what a great story with, with Blake Snell. He actually, I found this out, uh, this is pretty crazy. Uh, his 11.2 career strikeouts per nine innings is the highest in MLB history.
Hmm.
Pretty neat. I understand that, um, the SEAL clappers never say anything bad about the Rays. I understand how the Rays operate and all that. It's just sad sometimes. And this is okay. We can validate our feelings here in this podcast. It is sad that other organizations are able to have their cake and eat it too.
Right.
And they can have the Blake Snells and the Tyler Glass nows, and we had them. We had those two guys, but we can't afford to pay those guys. And I know some people are going to be saying, it's better to have bosses, better to have Bradleys, better to have them young and all. Okay, whatever. Go yell at an echo chamber. It would be nice to keep stars. It would be nice to have money to keep your stars. Um, you know, I'm, you know, how much I know about football. I'm pretty sure Kansas City is not a big, um, market, but guess what? They get to keep Patrick Mahomes. They get to keep the, the, the Mr. Taylor Swift on their, on their roster. Must be nice, you know?
Yeah. Hey, that comes with having a salary cap. You get afforded the opportunity to do those types of things. Yeah, it's pretty big for Blake Snell. Uh, he is a Scott Boris client, mind you. Um, and this is really, I think he wants that, of course he wants the bag. He wants the money. Who doesn't? But this is the best opportunity for him to get that ring or multiple rings of his being paired up with Glass now, Shohei Yamamoto. And, uh, the Dodgers might get, might keep getting richer with the Japanese phenom, Roki Sasaki. And, and there's so many other names in that rotation that we haven't even touched on. I mean, this is a team legitimately that could roll out a six, seven man rotation. But he's got two Cy Youngs, he's got two ERA titles, he's got an all-star appearance. This is about what's left for him in his career track to be able to accomplish. Uh, the only thing I would note about Blake Snell is you gotta be able to provide innings. Um, you know, that is one thing that has. Been, uh, fleeing from him. Uh, I know there were two seasons where he got 180 plus innings, but outside of that, you're basically. If you average it out, you're getting about 108 to 128 innings from Blake Snell. And I guess the, the Dodgers are okay with that. They can afford that. Um, they're, they're okay with the five and dive. And that, that's how it seems to be for me. And you know, he's a West Coast kid, so it, it makes sense to, to exit the Giants. I mean. Heck, you can tell he likes being on the West Coast, but because he's, he's been with the Padres, he's been with the Giants and now he's going to be with the Dodgers. His best chance to, to get a title or multiple titles.
Yeah.
So, all right, there we go. Um, hopefully you all have a wonderful day. Stay safe and we will talk to you tomorrow. Hopefully with a special guest. So stay tuned for that.